Warm?
Yeah, it's warm.
Yeah, what's the temperature now?
It's not as cold as it was over here.
Well, I put a sweater on. I'm looking for my Bernie mittens.
Hey, do you have a charger?
No.
The time to begin matters by the public. I did have two Js. I don't even know how to answer that. I went there, ate, and came back. Right over the bridge. All right. I'd like to call this February 20th, or February 2nd, 2021 Board of County Commissioners meeting back to order. Quorum is not required, but at this time, we do have myself, Dave Kerner, Vice Mayor Weinroth, and Commissioner Weiss. Thank you. Very good. And Commissioner Sacks. We're going to start with Reverend Cindy Falco de Corrado. And then following the Reverend will be Sarah Mori.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, we can hear you.
Okay. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I just wanted to talk to, in general, some facts. Did you know? And I would like you to look up this information that I'm sharing with you, because I want you to know it for yourself, not just because someone tells you something. It's always important to validate the information that you're hearing. So what I want to tell you is some truth today, because I know the truth sets you free. We do have a public law 104-191, and it's a lawful exemption. I'd like you to look it up. I'm going to repeat the number, so if you're listening, please do your homework. Did you know we have a Florida state law that also says it is illegal in the state of Florida to wear a mask? That Florida statute is 876.12. Has any of you actually pulled up the emergency order and read it? Please do. I want to encourage you. Please look up the Palm Beach County EO Order 2020-12. I see that many people, including businesses, do not actually read what was put out there. And people are being brutalized, they're being arrested, they're being accosted, they're being beaten up over things that they are not themselves even educated. Even in the Sheriff's Department, they don't know that there are exemptions. They actually believe there's no such thing as an exemption. It would behoove them to read the mandate. Now, I know Virginia Baker wrote the mandate, and I know what's in there, because I've read it many times, and I try to share it with people when they try to do brutal attacks on Americans who are exercising their exemptions because they are exempt. You don't need to walk in a store and be harassed by people because they didn't read the mandate, and they are causing the conflict and the abuses of other Americans. Shame on you. We call them what? Karens. Because you know what? If you want to wear a mask and you choose to do that, and you want to hurt your temple, you go right ahead. But you don't have the right to go and tell other people how to live their life and how to take care of their temple, when my body is the temple of God. Created in the image of God is my face, and I have the right, the God-given right, to breathe, and no one has that right to take it away. I want you to look those things up for yourself. Did you know that oxygen is the number-one nutrient for every living organism? And yes, humans as well? And do you know that a mask is an unhealthy obstruction of oxygen flow that can lead to brain damage, heart failure? Did you know that it can lead to organ failure? Did you know that? I want you to know what you're doing to your bodies, and stop just listening to what people are saying and false news on the CNN and everywhere else. Do your due diligence. This is your body. You only get one time on this earth, this temple, and I pray to God that you do your due diligence and do what's right to take care of your temple. Eat right, drink lots of fluids, take your vitamins, exercise. That's what's going to keep you healthy. Wearing a mask, you are killing and destroying yourself. You are breathing back in your carbon dioxide. You exhale for a reason, to get those toxins out of your body. Then the little bacteria that goes in your little mask that you keep breathing in, you're going to get, in your throat, mold.
Reverend, thank you for your comments. Your time has expired.
Did you know that in 1912, when they had the Spanish Flu, they didn't die from the flu? What they died from is wearing a mask. Do your documentation. Don't go to Google, because Google lies. Look on GoGoDuck, or DuckGoGo, and Yippee.com. Find other search engines. I want you to know the truth, because the truth is what's going to keep you healthy and whole, and you're going to make wise choices from truth, not based on lies. I also wanted to let you know, as far as businesses are concerned, I was a business owner. ... corporation of articles, I stated in there that I was a public business, open to the ... Okay, I think you turned my mic off.
That was the point. Your time has expired, ma'am, so we're going to move on to the next speaker. How do I turn a microphone on? How did you guys do that? Can you turn it off, please? Because it's interrupting the proceeding at this point.
... right that no man gave us.
Also, we have Commissioner Maria Moreno present, Commissioner Weiss present, and Commissioner Melissa McKinley present by remote.
This is how Hitler did it. This is how communism ...
Sarah Mori, followed by Talita.
Good afternoon. I think it's kind of hypocritical to not allow people to exercise their civil rights in this room. There are eight exemptions on your county mandate, and you don't honor them inside of this room. Your mandate would be null and void without these exemptions, because it's unconstitutional. And the people of color that are perpetuating this behavior, it's sad to see, okay? I'm going to read you Title II of the Civil Rights Act of 1964, okay? "All persons shall be entitled to the full and equal enjoyment of the goods, services, facilities, privileges, advantages, and accommodations of any place of public accommodation, as defined in this section, without discrimination, on the ground of race, color, religion, or national origin. I highly doubt that people that participated in the civil rights movement, okay, expected you all to do this to people. And not only that, but encourage discrimination against individuals who choose not to wear a mask or cannot wear a mask. Cannot wear a mask. People with PTSD cannot wear a mask. It is traumatizing for them. And y'all are encouraging discrimination against these people." You can look me in the eye, Mr. Kerner, okay? You're making posters that say, "No mask, no entry for businesses to put on their doors." And I'm sure your ancestors, I'm looking at the people of color on this board, did not like the discrimination that they had to put up with over the last century. Okay? I have lived in Palm Beach County my entire life, and why is it that I can drive to different counties in this state, and they list the exemptions on their posters for businesses to know and see? But yet, your public health officials are going around threatening small businesses with fines? Sir, I am speaking. Do you think you could look at me when I'm speaking?
You have 30 seconds left.
Okay. Why is it that I can travel to different states, and they honor these exemptions? These businesses know about exemptions, because their county commissioners are telling them about these exemptions, okay? The World Health Organization recommends that children under five do not wear a mask, because it's dangerous. It's dangerous for pregnant people to wear a mask. The only place I can shop for groceries right now is Publix, because they know the law.
Thank you, ma'am, for your comments. Your time has expired.
Okay?
We're going to have Talita, followed by Alana Monath.
Here. I wish I could say it would be nice, it's nice to see everybody, but it's not, knowing that you all are acting like Nazi Germany. I'm going to start with Maurice. On December 8th, 2020, 3:05 PM on the Facebook, Maurice Vigueres Hernandez, he commented, "Send the maskless to concentration camps." Maria? Commissioner Maria? Sacks? Do you feel good sleeping at night? Since you can't look at me, do you feel good sleeping at night with a good conscience that this is what you all are perpetuating? Every single person in this room is perpetuating this fear, this agenda. It is propaganda every day, multiple times a day, on the Facebook. Virginia Baker, what did you mean when you said that we were, that the maskless were going to have to start showing papers upon entry into the business? You're the one who drafted this mandate. This mandate that I had laminated the day after, on June 24th, when it was settled, when you guys wrote this, okay? And because of continual harassment, I have to now wear a body cam, because I am being publicly accosted. Is this what you want, Commissioner Weiss? When you said in the emails that the maskless, the masks are not going to go away until everybody is vaccinated. That's what you said. So what? For the 10 stages of genocide, it's classification, symbolization, discrimination, dehumanization, which is what's already going on, organization, as well, is already going on, and polarization is where we are at right now. What's next? Preparation to exterminate us? And then denial, as you all sit upon us, collecting your paychecks, while countless others don't have money to put food on the table? You know what? From everything that I learned about history, one thing that I know is that you guys are just going to be fine and dandy. You guys are having your little fancy friggin' parties, right? Collecting your stupid paychecks. Can't escape God. We know where you live. And one thing I know about communism is that those who are the Communist Party, when they try to come over here or whatnot, there's nowhere they can go to escape the people that they have hurt, that are the casualties of war.
Thank you, ma'am, for your comments.
Go to hell. Why don't you do something about the sea turtles and the masks? Sea turtles and masks are dying.
Mr. Mayor, the next person will be Alana Monath, followed by Danielle Thunderhawk.
Next one's outside.
I can start? Good afternoon. I'm going to read a quote from Jason Kristoff. "Our enemies use documented behavior modification psychology to make the public to do themselves what our enemies could never do by force." If people research behavior modification psychology, they would realize that being mentally manipulated into destroying themselves and their own children. "Questioning and doubting the most historically corrupt and fraudulent companies and entities in the world does not make you anti-anything, nor does it make you a conspiracy theorist. Actually, questioning is and should be the place of reason. The fact that questioning has become so taboo should, in fact, send a chill up everybody's spine." Now, everybody can do their own research, as I have done. Mandates are not laws. Fines cannot be issued on mandates that are not laws. Once again, there's medical exemptions and religious exemptions on this mask mandate. Statutes, codes, and ordinances are not laws. They are guidelines put in place for our public servants, who have taken an oath to abide by the Constitution. Now, executive orders are only for the executive branch of government, which means that the president and all governmental employees. The CDC does not write laws. They have no legislative jurisdiction and zero delegated authority. Anyone can test positive practically, test positive practically for practically anything with a PCR test, if you run it long enough. And that was by Dr. Carrie Mullins, Ph.D., the one who created the PCR test. And my last comment is from Harry S. Truman during a special message to the Congress on the internal security of the United States, August 8th, 1950. "Once a government is committed to the principle of silencing the voice of opposition, it has only the one way to go, and that is down the path of increasingly repressive measures, until it becomes a source of terror to all its citizens and creates a country where everyone lives in fear." I suggest everybody do their due diligence on everything that I said, and if they don't, the greatest gift is not being afraid to question. And that's by Ruby D. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, for your comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're going to have Danielle Thunderhawk, followed by Mr. David London.
Am I ready? So I'd like to begin this by sharing my family's record of service to this country. My grandfather was in the FBI and was the first editor of the Society of Former Special Agents magazine. My father was a Yale graduate and served 30 years as a federal magistrate judge in the U.S. District Courts in North Carolina. My former husband served nine combat rotations in the U.S. Army with 175 Ranger Regiment. I stood by his side, raising our three children, as his friends returned with that flag draped over their coffin. So when you sit up there and speak about freedom versus fear, my family knows the difference intimately. To those people sitting up there who have served and continue to vote for tyranny, I am here to tell you that you are a betrayal to the uniform, but more importantly, you're a betrayal to the people in this country. But I'm not here to speak to you folks. You've proven time and time again not to care about our voices. You've traded my children's future for your own comfort. I'm here to talk to the people you're supposed to serve, yet you treat like servants. My brothers and sisters, we are stronger together than we are apart. Time and time again, I have witnessed these people sell our rights for their profits. War profiteering, under the guise of "for your safety." Safety from what? These people in front of me are more of a threat to my children's safety, to our safety, than any one of you. I believed the mask at first, and I complied out of cowardice or confusion. I wasn't listening to the inner voice that was screaming to me, "This is a lie." But I woke up, and now that I'm awake, I've committed myself to stop anyone else from being bamboozled into that sort of paralyzing fear, fear fostered by man and man alone. And I beg you to ask yourself these questions. How long do you think this will go on? If you think your compliance stops your subjugation, you have never been to a circus. Lions are beat for their disobedience and rewarded for their compliance, but at the end of the day, they still return to their cages. But what happens when the pride realizes they have more power than the ones with the whip? After almost a full year, you need to ask yourself if this is what you want for your children. There's no smiles, no human interaction, no freedom of choice. I urge you to research the following. Efficacy of masks. Carrie Mullis, the inventor of PCR testing. Vaccine ingredients. Vaccine manufacturer liability. Total U.S. deaths from 2016 to 2020. And that's just a start. The greatest fear they have is for us to be united, because our unity is the greatest threat to their power. This is more than a mask. This is more than a vaccine. This is freedom versus enslavement. And I'll end with a quote by Francis Schaeffer. "If there is no place for disobeying the government, that government has been made God." You, men and women, are not God. Do not comply.
Thank you, ma'am, for your comments, and we appreciate the service of your family members, and particularly the two FBI agents that were lost today in the line of duty. We pray for them and their families.
Mr. Mayor, we have Mr. David London, followed by Drew Martin.
Can't talk with this thing. If you, if we want to deal with masks, the Israelis invented something called a Sado mask, which is made out of zinc. It's patented. It's proven to be 99 or 12% efficacy efficient. This came out about six months ago. So if you're going to require masks, how about some masks that have some degree of proven, you know, efficacy? You know, like the supposed vaccines. Now, I was here last March 30th. It's reusable. It's not, it's reusable. You can reuse it for a whole year, or you wash, you can wash it up to 55 times. But I don't wear it. I'm comfortable washing this thing out as necessary every night. I was here March 30th, March 10th, and I spoke about remarkable work on intravenous vitamin C, work from the '40s to the '70s. So if you come down with a serious issue, that is one, along with vitamin D and zinc, that you can effectively treat people instead of the damn vaccines. You have a doctor right downtown here, who posts weekly columns, and she's, a few times, she's developed a whole protocol here. You have another doctor a few blocks from here, who has some advanced zinc ointments, mainly for dermatological use. So if this thing is proven efficacious for dealing with viruses, it has other applications other than for masks, then why isn't this being used? Now, Senator Scott, two months ago, announced that he was tested positive for, tested positive for the virus. Well, very shortly after that, I heard on 1290 twice and WID once, in his voice, "I took a lot of C, D3, and zinc. Here is a combination of that for less than $10." Everything you're doing with the damn, with all these vaccines is a fraud. With Dr. Stella Emanuel, remember that black lady from Nigeria, who was on the steps of the Supreme Court? And she said, "I've treated like 350 people, basically no problem." And she got her head cut off. You haven't heard from her since. That's censorship. Maybe I would suggest that you invite her to one of your special, you know, special presentations in the morning, instead of the doctor who you have here. You talk about cleaning your hands. How about cleaning your nose? I'd never heard it mentioned by a public health authority. Maybe you need to clean your nose with any number of things, from propolis to oregano extracts to silver hydro-sol. All of these things are known by certain people who run health food stores. This is a book called The Ion Effect. It was written 40 years ago. In the Palm Beach Post, a few months ago, November 6th or so, you have a company here that has very, very advanced ionization equipment you can put in your building and deal with it. This is a doctor, the Supreme Court doctor, who is both a doctor and a lawyer, who was told to stop treating using hydroxychloroquine and zinc, and she effectively treated her patients back.
Thank you, sir. Your time has expired. We do appreciate your comments here today.
We have Drew Martin, followed by Linda Smith.
Can you hear me? I'm going to leave my mask on, or do I need to take my mask off?
We have no problem hearing you, sir.
Drew Martin, I'm with the Laxachy Group of the CR Club, and I'm here as a representative. The CR Club has a position on masks and social distancing, and we don't, we're not having any in-person meetings right now, because we feel that's important to protect the public. This is a national position established by National Board of Directors. I'm here to talk to you today about the environment, however. And certainly, one thing I want to encourage people to do is, when you wear a mask or something, don't litter it on the ground, because that does get into the environment, and a lot of that's plastic. We also encourage you, if you're wearing gloves, and a lot of people go to Publix, and they have gloves, and then they take them off, and they throw them on the ground. So we're encouraging people, you know, that all needs to be thrown away in the garbage. Now, I've been following up on recycling, and there's a lot of effort right now, because recycling is not working that well, but I don't want to discourage people from continuing to recycle. One of the problems is that people aren't buying recycled content. And one of the things happened with the county is, the county was buying recycled content paper, and then they went to what is called sustainable. Sustainable paper doesn't mean anything. It really doesn't make that much, because there isn't any real certification. So we really asked the county, whatever you purchase, anything with plastic in it or anything with paper in it, please ask that it be recycled content. Now, I've been working with Audubon, and the Native Plant Society have a presentation for you. I hope to have something in March. We're trying to find some Ph.D. professors to give you some real detailed information on the need for shade trees. Do you know that a shade tree can reduce the temperature up to 40 degrees? That's a huge difference. If you have shade trees around buildings, if you have shade trees around parking, you're reducing the temperature by 40 degrees. That can make a huge difference. That can save people's electric bills. It can reduce the heat island effect around people's houses, and many people who don't have the money to pay for all the cooling that they need in the summer, if they had shade trees, it can make a huge difference. Unfortunately, with the state law right now, the county is not really enforcing the rules. We're seeing, I understand that at a parking lot, they just cut down all the trees in the parking lot. The assumption being that the county knows, longer has authority. The county still has authority. An arborist can remove a tree without a permit if the tree is causing a problem, but they just can't arbitrarily remove every single tree in either an HOA or a parking lot, simply because they don't want trees there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Just a brief question and a comment. Did you happen to perhaps observe online the zoning commission meeting that we had recently, where the HOA had to make application, and the arborist certified the trees that needed to be removed because of damage to the sidewalks? Did you, does that ring a bell at all?
I was at the November meeting, but I would like, if you possibly could, when there's going to be a question of vegetation, if the county could notify me. I don't always see, I try to look at the agendas all the time, but I might not know that's going to be on there, so if you could have county staff that's going to be on there, so if you could have county staff to let me know.
I'm happy to take on that responsibility, and I have your number, but, and I don't think it comes up often, but we did have that application come up. And from what I understand, correct me if I'm wrong, is that after the application's made to remove the trees, the county actually goes in and inspects and makes sure, makes sure that the trees that were authorized to be removed by the board are the ones that are removed. So if somebody's just cutting down trees without, without a permit in its entirety, without evaluation, then that would be in violation of the law, and certainly you and your members and anyone else that you know that's in tune with this issue should be notifying PZ and B and code enforcement. And I'll allow you to respond, but just a last comment, because I don't think Commissioner McKinley's able to communicate right this moment, but she did bring up that it's important that you continue to work with and Audubon continue to work with our PZ and B staff on the tree code. We are actively working on that. We understand that the ball is in your court.
Right.
And, okay, and I'm sure COVID-19 has complicated that matter, but we are looking forward to your feedback and input in Audubon.
Well, what I'd like to do, if it's, if the commission would allow it, I've been working with Audubon and the Native Plant Society to see if we could make a presentation to the BCC at a workshop, because, and I appreciate that this is a complicated issue, but I, what I think is happening, and Lori Vinicor, who's actually on the planning and the zoning board, is the one who brought that up. She said she went, she drove her car to a parking lot at Lowe's, and when she got there, they had cut down every single tree in the parking lot. And I think what's happening is a lot of people are just assuming that the county's no longer requiring a permit, and they're just going to go ahead and start moving the trees. I appreciate that that, this one item made it to the county commission, but I'm afraid that a lot of people are just acting arbitrarily and that, you know, no one's knowing about it until after the action has taken place.
Well, make sure to report it to code enforcement, and I'll do everything I can to accommodate requests. It may not be a whole workshop on it, but at some point, we do intend to have an agenda item with your input on the tree code. And at that point in time, we can certainly have extended input from you and your members.
Right. I'm going to try to do it, I'm trying to do it by March.
Okay.
But it might, maybe early April if we can't get it by March.
And we appreciate your work and the diligence that you guys are putting into it. We want to get it right, and we care deeply about this issue, so thank you.
Well, I really appreciate your work, Mayor Kerner, and I, and all the commissioners. And I'm very happy that you're taking an interest in this, so I can't thank you enough for your interest and how much I appreciate that you've taken time. And Commissioner McKinley, Commissioner Weiss, Commissioner Bernard, Commissioner Sacks, all the commissioners, Weinroth, and...
The thing goes to you, and not a lot of people remember this nor care, but Mr. Martin and I were opponents in my first county commission race, and in that particular race, I was the winner. It could have gone either way, but I learned a lot from you in that process, and you've inspired me in a lot of ways, and I, and I mean it when I say that we're going to give a voice to the concerns that you have, because I share them after being educated by you and your, and your team.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I really appreciate you, you're a good friend, and I appreciate everything you do.
Thank you, Mr. Martin.
Okay. Have a good day, sir.
You, too.
We have the final two cards, which is going to be first by Ms. Linda Smith, followed by Mr. Fane Loesman.
Okay. Hello. My name is Linda Smith, and I live in Jupiter, Florida, and I want to thank you for my mask, although this isn't a Palm Beach County mask. I want to wish congratulations to Melissa McKinley and Maria Sacks on the Susan B. Anthony Award 2020, 2021, which I believe was awarded this morning. I also understand through the Office of Resiliency, excellent, the Office of Exilian, Resiliencies, excellent website newsletter that Palm Beach County has been awarded gold certification by the U.S. Green Building Council. Lead for Cities and Communities as a Registered Architect and Lead Professional. I applaud you all. Palm Beach County is going, is joining over 100 certified cities and counties such as Orlando, Cincinnati, Phoenix, and Washington, D.C. I also understand that you are working on an ordinance that would restrict or ban single-use plastic. There are now over 17 cities and counties that have passed ordinances and internal policies local to our area. Canada, which isn't local, has banned single-use plastics by 2021. That's right. That's this year. It will likely include bags, stirr stricks, cutlery, and plastics. They are still word crafting that law. More than 60 other countries have taken steps to reduce single-use plastics. The European Union's Parliament is banning the top 10 plastic items found on their beaches by 2021, this year. I have in the past handed out information to you all regarding plastic ordinances. Please let me know if there's any way I can help. I also wanted to address that masks don't kill sea turtles. Climate change does. I mean, they might have killed one or two, but really, any efforts you can make to reduce Palm Beach County's government's or residents' carbon footprint would be much appreciated. Climate change is happening in spite of the fact that we are cold today. Climate change is not local, short-term weather. It is long-term climate, and the science tells us the planet is warming in spite of the current snowstorm up north. Florida, with its coastline, is on the front lines for sea level rise. I anticipate our mortgage insurance to go up in the near future when they redraft the floodplain, and people will find themselves now in a flood zone and will need to carry flood insurance. It has real financial consequences for anyone with a mortgage. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments today. And Mr. Loesman, you'll have three minutes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Fane Loesman, before I get to the random thoughts of my cluttered mind, let me take one more shot at these mask people, because they don't know what they're talking about. I'm starting to get pissed off, because if I go out there, I have to run a gauntlet of them. In Day County, you can't go in the building or stay in the building without a mask on. Please call up the Day County counterpart and enforce that law in this building. I don't want to get COVID walking to the elevator. It is not a civil rights violation, it's not a First Amendment violation to have people wear a mask in this building. They don't have a right to come in here and say whatever they want to do. Society looks at a mask as a safety issue. That's why we don't have 15-year-old children going to bars and buying alcohol, or buying firearms, or what have you. Society says it's unsafe to give children weapons, to let them get drunk, to drive a vehicle higher than a .08 blood alcohol. It's unsafe to be in a building with this virus. That's what the experts say. Those people should be outside with their little speaker. They shouldn't be out here, and I have a real problem with that. So saying that it violates the First Amendment, no, it doesn't. You come in with your mask and say, "Oh, a bunch of jerks." You're not taking away the content of their speech. You're having them do it in a safe manner until this virus is under control. So all this rambling from these people, they don't know what they're talking about. I've been in the U.S. Supreme Court. My lawyer, who won my First Amendment case, will be happy to talk to you, Pam Carlin, and she can educate you that what you're doing here is wrong, giving these people a First Amendment right to stay out there. They don't have a First Amendment right. It's a safety matter. They want to exercise their First Amendment right. You come in with a mask, or you go outside and put the podium out there, but it shouldn't be outside your council chambers. Now, what's going on? We fought a First Amendment case. The Fourth DCA did a procurement affirmed against the county. We've asked the Fourth DCA to certify that question to the Florida Supreme Court, okay? We are confident that you're putting some substantial propositions on the consent agenda that should not be there. Per Flores, anti-social law, you should give each speaker three minutes to talk on substantive items. A $4 million item, things like that are being buried on the consent agenda, and you're wrong. The legislature said meetings will have to go longer when you're putting propositions like that on there. So it's a case of first impression. We'll see what's happened, but you didn't win anything. We can start this whole process all over again, so I didn't like the media coverage on that. Number two, Riviera Beach is terrorizing me now that I put my floating container home over there. I'm not moving my floating container home. They reached out to the Army Corps of Engineers, who sent a nasty letter to me that I could be arrested or fined $100,000. Army Corps doesn't know what they're talking about. My land was dry land before 1899, so I'm fighting that out with them. But Riviera Beach's attorney, Ms. Niemann, says she's going to reach out to your office and try to change the county's floating home ordinance. We fought that out with Valache years ago. The county's floating home ordinance applies to the floating structures around Peanut Island. Those are litter. You could call up the Sheriff's Office and say, "Tell every one of those floating homes out of there, they don't have a right to be on state water or county waters." But my property is private, and back off. Do not change the county ordinance to go after my home, or we'll have a giant legal battle that we don't need to go down.
Thank you. And we do have, did you have a question?
I do.
Okay.
We have a question, we have a question for you.
Sure. Go ahead.
Please finish your thoughts.
What?
No, I'm just, I'm, you're not, your time is up, so I want to, I want to hear your final point.
Okay. My final point is the $5 million that this county gave to the city of Riviera Beach to part of, I think it was Newell or Exelon, who set aside $5 million for the Riviera Beach Marina. I fought that $5 million to be given to you, because I said they weren't going to use it to maintain recreational access for the public, and they are not. They brought in Lagerhead Marina. Lagerhead Marina is, is only putting in boats over 32 feet, only putting in boats that they want to put in there. So somebody ought to look to claw back that $5 million, because it wasn't used for the purpose that it sold this commission on at that time. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. And that concludes matters by the public. I'd like to see, before I recognize Vice Mayor Weinroth, if there is a consensus on this board that we should evaluate based upon the complaint by the member of the public. And by the way, when you exit, you may want to exit to your left, if, if people are out there without masks, because it may be a little bit safer that way. But is there a consensus among the board that having unmasked during this pandemic and emerging disorder in place, having a different accommodation for those that are unwilling or unable to wear masks? Is there a consensus on the board? You recognize Commissioner Sacks.
Mayor, I'd like to ask if there is a requirement of government buildings, county, city, or state, that masks are worn when entering or doing business in a government building?
There, in our county and in our county facilities, yes.
Then I think that that we need to certainly be unified in that requirement, that anybody coming into this government building must have a mask unless they have a medical reason not to. So I think that this needs to be done throughout the building, not just for those who wish to contest the issue of wearing masks. And I think it would be, that is my suggestion, Mayor, that at least this would be a unified requirement that anybody walking into this building, it's a government building, and that needs to be, we need to, we need to make sure that we have a unified voice on this.
Any dissenting opinions from colleagues on the board? Because in light of Mr. Loesman's real fear and concern, it's something that we need to respond to, and so I'm going to ask the county administrator to work with our county attorney's office to find an accommodation that meets both goals, and that's to make sure that folks that are here wearing their mask lawfully to speak in front of us in person can do so without having to jeopardize their health because of accommodations made to other folks that aren't able to comply. And certainly, we, we want to hear everything that they have to say, but the accommodation can, if it can be made in a safer way, then we would like to see that accomplished. And with regards to the, obviously, the legality of the mask, we just had the Fourth District Court of Appeal uphold our executive order and actions, and so that, that issue is not to be adjudicated any further unless the Supreme Court somehow finds a way to get jurisdiction on that. All right. Commissioner Marino.
Sorry. Just a question. Can you go over again what the mandate is for wearing a mask in a government building and what exemptions are there for not wearing a mask in a government building? I think that's...
I'll defer to the county attorney if she has a, because I don't like to summarize statutory language. I like it to be precise.
I'd like, I think, I think we'd all like to hear it, so I think it, it needs to be reiterated.
I also don't like to wing something like that. I need it in front of me. Would it be possible to just follow up with each one of you in writing with a snapshot of it and attach the most recent executive order? I just don't want to misstate anything out here. But there are exemptions and there are requirements, and I will make sure that they're clear in a simple way without disappointing you to the order. If that's acceptable...
So before we make a motion here about what we should and shouldn't do, shouldn't that information be available, that information should be made available?
Well, if we take it generally, that we're being asked, you know, the county attorney and county administrator to get together to see what's legally possible, to give you more options, that seems like it would be all compatible to present everything together, like this is what you have now, this is how far you can go.
And that is the direction we're asking today, correct?
Correct. It's not my intent to impose any further restriction at this time on accommodations. It's just to simply bring that item back to the board.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you. That comes together nicely that way.
That decision can be made by the board as a whole. All right. I'm going to recognize Vice Mayor Weinroth, who's on the prevailing side of Agenda Item 5A1. You recognize, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's been brought to our attention that the, this morning, we had approved Item 5A1, which was a approval, a proposal to have a preliminary reading and to advertise for a public hearing on February 9, 2021, at 9:30 a.m., for a proposed revision to the county's EMS ordinance. We've learned that there is not enough time to advertise for that particular meeting, so I'm going to make a motion to reconsider that vote, and if that is accepted by the board, then to change the date to March 9.
Motion's been made by Vice Mayor Weinroth on Agenda 5A1 to amend the second hearing, public hearing, to March, March?
March 9.
March 9, 2021, at 9:30 a.m. Is that sufficient clarity, county attorney? Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Weiss. No further comments by members of the board. All in favor? All opposed? That item passes 6 to 0. That hearing will be held on March 9, 2021, at 9:30 a.m., related to the COPCN for the healthcare district. That concludes business, unless there's any other last-minute comments by members of the board or the county administrator or county attorney. We are adjourned. Thank you.